Call a meeting to order. All those willing to stand for the plans will be here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Somewhat.
Katie, do I have a second? Lance?
Randy.
Randy. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to visitors. No visitors. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do this all in one full sweep. To 5.1 to 5.51. Is there anything anybody wants to help pull out of this? Anything? Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Somewhat.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. I would like to thank all of our donations to the district in the amount of $4,163.88. Okay, we'll move on to six administrative reports. Six one, one, Jackie, review of budget year-to-date.
We're at eighty-seven percent. It looks good. The future payoff salaries aren't in here, so we can't compare it to last year's. It's just the way we feel about so. Try moving some money around between object loads, but we still have that money in the agency. I'll buy you one more of these. These were solliciting nineteen bills.
Okay.
I won't be able to do it this year, twenty-one, until September after August or March the first time. So, next one is August, October nineteen, and then September, October fifteenth.
Okay. Any questions for Jackie? No questions? Hearing none, then we'll move on to six point two, school board members. Anybody have anything?
Associations met.
We've met twice, or once since our last meeting.
Right.
Things have been going pretty well.
I think so.
Yep.
Yep. Fills, facilities during committee met. Looking at drawings and we're still in the budget and timelines. And everything seems to be on pace. I thought drawings looked, rendering looks very good.
Good.
Conceptual, yeah, but until we know for sure where we're... Our user groups have come forward with their requests, but I think so far it looks pretty good.
What's the timeline for some type of design to the public?
I think we're looking, community meeting in September, right? End of August.
September or something. It's scheduled, right?
Board work session after our August meeting. So, after our regular meeting, ISG and Krause Anderson will be here, and then they're going to take you through kind of what the, what they've come up with before, and then probably two weeks after that is when they would have the public community meeting. I figured that a committee felt it was prudent that the whole board see, see something and take a look at this, kind of where things are at, and get an explanation. The budget, you know, their first crack at the budget, there's a lot of unknowns. It was a little bit above, but they said that's very normal within the margins that they were at, so.
Yep.
So, we'll find out more when we get closer, but all is still to go out for bids in November.
And then part of it too was when we figured out how our bond sale turned out, which is today, that gives you your definitive amount of this is what you ended up with after you bought it.
So, September or so?
Community meeting in September.
Yeah.
Second meeting is what we were shooting for.
So, they had to redraw or something again?
More detailed after the user group. They're, they're coming back on August twelfth for a follow-up with the user groups. So, the input that they had given, they will put that to, show them what all that looks like. Just to, they've had very good interactions with the teachers and the spaces and getting good ideas for all of that, so I think that's been very positive. And what we've heard is the staff, it's been, been very, they've really appreciated that feedback, and I mean, that's really what we want to, you know, they're the people that are going to be using the space to teach in, and so I think we're getting, I think there's...
And it wasn't just, just the teachers. I mean, it was all the way down to the custodians and your secretarial and your athletic departments that will be able to use the athletic space after hours.
There's going to be a lot of planning, coordination that goes along with this. I mean, we talked about, you know, our long-term facility maintenance plan and, you know, coordinating some of that work with this and trying to bid that together to get the best prices and even better savings, so that's where the Krause Andersons come in, plan all that budget, do all that work, so hopefully we can get that done well.
Any other board members? Okay, then we'll move on to six three, superintendent's report.
Just summer projects are going on well. This past weekend with the wind damage to our tennis courts, so we'll be talking with ISG about that, and we also called insurance, and these were, we had our damage before. They were repaired and reinforced. That was sixty mile an hour winds, and now we're at seventy-five plus mile an hour winds, so a little frustrating, but the fence is actually damaged worse than it was after that winter storm, so it's the north and south end, so we'll get it fixed and see what we need to do on it, so. But it just happened on Saturday morning or Saturday.
So, there's no way we can put trees or like a shelter to combat the wind on either of those sides that, I guess I haven't looked at it, but...
I'm open to it.
No, I'm just asking. I don't know. I mean, for future, do they recommend anything to...
There are some trees, but they're young, but they just...
Right, I suppose they're not big enough.
Ten years for those, fifteen to get, before they get up anywhere, so I don't, I have, I'll, as I said, we'll find out what the solution is to this.
Guess there's one.
What's next, ninety mile an hour winds?
Let's hope not.
Well, the dynamics of the winds will change once the building is up as well.
True.
Great. So, I also wanted to mention that I have a meeting on the wind tower on August first. I did ask if any board member could attend that meeting. So, we have meetings. I've asked a few local wind tower people, and then also the service provider on the wind generator. They will be there to kind of give us advice. I went through the whole binder that's been put together by Jackie because it was this thick. And it's a twenty-five-year, twenty-five-year life expectancy, so that does get us out to about twenty, twenty-eight. But they felt, when I talked to the people, they said it was really prudent, you know, saying something about this tower, and they kind of were chuckling. They don't make parts for that thing anymore. That little generator, they called it. It's a really small one by today's standards, and, but, you know, it does generate seventy-five thousand dollars a year of income, and we'll take it as long as we can get it, but we do need to start making plans for the use of that. I also met with the city and talked about the, you know, the project, and they've gone through, and we're fine with where we're going because they showed where we were at, and the architects have talked, so we won't have any issues with distance from the windmill for the, for the new elementary school too, so.
How long does that meeting have to take?
I, I don't really want to sit around for more than an hour. I think it's really about what is, what's the condition of it? What's a plan? What's a reasonable way to do this?
Is this at one, right?
I think it was one o'clock, yeah.
I'll try and get there because I'll be at the fair, but we got a few things we've got to do.
That's why I can't leave. There will be no one at the vet clinic besides me.
I'll try and come through.
It'll be bare bones.
Other than that, July has been a quiet month, so, but we're gearing up. A lot of meetings here will start early August and getting back to school, so, you know, we're kind of thinking that way, and we're starting to gear up, so.
Okay. Then we'll move on to old business with the second readings of the learning readiness handbook, elementary handbook, middle school handbook, and high school handbook. Do I have a motion to approve?
Somewhat.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Brad, any questions? Any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. New business, eight point one, one sales resolution for the building bonds for the new building. Julie?
Yes.
Does that light on?
It's green.
Yep, that's...
Yeah. Hi, Mr. Chair, members of board, Superintendent Ederson. Chairabouts asked me as I walked in, is it a good day today? And it is a good day today. So, you had great, great bids today on, on your bonds, and I have a number of documents at your seat in front of you that I will go through quickly. If there are any questions, certainly ask at any time. I'm going to start with this kind of memo document with the chart on the bottom. First off, we ended up selling bonds for twenty-five million four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and I will get to that at the end here. So, you've still got as much money as you were planning on and as much that is statutorily allowed by what your voters approved back in February. So, not February, April.
Yep.
April next. You and RTR next. So, that's good news for you in the end. Why the good rates? If you look at that chart, there's a five-year history of, of twenty-year bond, general obligation bond rates, so, and so if you're looking at the black line there, that's historical look. We were really at record lows back in the summer of two thousand sixteen, and actually we're creeping back toward that rate. It has just dropped every week since we put the initial run for you together back in November for the ballot. I think it was November twenty-eighth or so that we did that ballot tax impact, so the rates have dropped ever since then, and that's good news for you. On the back page of this document, we received eight proposals today, which is a very good number. This must be the sweet spot because that, rarely do I see more than eight bidders on some of these bonds. So, you were a well-rated district. You had credit enhanced, state credit enhancement program behind these bonds, and it's a nice size in terms of these institutional investors, so roughly twenty-five million dollars. It was a very competitive sale. From top to bottom, the range was point one zero two percent between the top bid and the low bid. So, top bid being the lowest interest, so everybody was very aggressive. And then in that green box there, we gave the school district a set of what we call our recommendations in June, that looking at the market as it was then, what did we estimate your sale to be? We estimated you would see a true interest cost of two point seven eight one percent. Today, you actually dropped that by almost twenty-eight basis points, down to two point five zero eight. So, again, good news, good news as well there. So, I mentioned the credit rating of A-plus. I want to thank Superintendent Ederson and, and Jackie for sitting on one of the longest rating calls that we've had. I think it was at your rating analyst on the last forty-five minutes. It was an hour and fifteen, I think.
Wow.
Hour and a half. I know it was a long...
Jackie's still having nightmares.
Probably is for that, but we got a good individual district rating of A-plus. I don't see many districts of your size that get higher than that because the biggest factor is you have a concentrated economy on ag. So, if something happens to the ag community, your district would potentially see some financial issues in the eyes of investors. So, A-plus is a very good rating, and then again, these qualify for the state credit enhancement, so you have literal, a triple A rating of the state of Minnesota backing up these bonds. So, in the investor's eyes, if for some reason Pipestone Area could not make the payment, the state actually steps in and makes the payment on your behalf. So, don't think you need to do that because there are a few steps that they would look at to make sure you couldn't, couldn't do that. But, good, good result. Piper Jaffray was the low bidder, and that's who we are recommending you award the sale to today. And once action is taken tonight and we finalize the sale, the district will have the proceeds on August twenty-second, and they will go to PMA who is doing their investments, the investments organs. So, again, thanks, thanks to everybody for their efforts in having a good sale today. The next document, I guess I would point to the yellow. Don't want to spend a lot of time on this. This is just a summary of the bidders that participated in the action today. You see Piper Jaffray. There's a little more detail there because they were the winning bidder, and you finalized that. And then you see some other bidders. Robert W. Baird had a, had a consortium, so all of those vendors in that list were part of that second place bid. Then you have Raymond James, Misro, Bank of America, and so on, but you can see all the various bids there, and Piper Jaffray led the way. Then the third, third handout is, is the tax impact, which certainly is always an area of concern. And what we did here is try to put comparison to where we started in this journey for the numbers we presented to the public back in the information campaign. So, that's the ballot column, and I always use the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar home as kind of the standard there. We were saying at the time, based on our estimates and interest rates, it was going to cost that home a forty-four dollars a year increase. Then in June, when we did an update to those numbers, it dropped to thirty-two dollars, and then from June to today, we dropped another five dollars, down to twenty-seven dollars is the net result for, for homeowners in the district. And you can see the corresponding drops regardless of what type of property you're, you're looking at. I guess ag would be the other. I want to point out, started at fifty-six cents an acre for home state ag, valued at sixty-five hundred dollars. Now it's down to twenty, twenty-nine cents. Part of that is due to, we now have a fifty percent ag credit, so that was part of that drop from fifty-six to thirty-four. New, new laws happen in the middle of this whole process, which are to your benefit as well, so. So, that's the individual property tax impact. And then the last document is this portrait printout with Pipestone Area School District, local tax allocation by property classification. And here we look at what types of property make up your school district, and the majority, to no surprise, is ag land, seventy-six point seven percent, followed by residential and commercial, nineteen point seven, and then we have personal property, and there are a lot of different things that, that fall into their fairly small part of your district, three and a half percent. And then based on the, the annual payments, the debt service payments that you would be making, that's on the left side there, you see that ag community would be looking to contribute one point four million dollars toward the payment. Residential and commercial, three hundred and sixty-two thousand, and then personal property, a small part, sixty-five thousand. Now, that's before the ag credit, and this worksheet is intended just to try to show the impact of that ag credit. So, now if you move over, the ag to school credit for your taxes payable in two thousand twenty, which are going to be paying for that two-one-twenty-one debt service payment, is, the ag credit is fifty percent, so instead of one point four million, the ag to school credit is going to lop off half of that, so the ag community is going to pay seven hundred and four thousand. And then so on and so forth, down the line, next year it increases to fifty-five percent for the ag credit, the following year to sixty percent, and then to seventy percent. And you'll notice up on the heading in parentheses above, provided current law comes to full fruition at seven. There are some caveats in there that the state budget needs to be in a certain position and so on. So, this is the way the law is and everything happening in a manner that would let it get to seventy percent. But in the end, if you look at the numbers on the bottom, again, ag land without ag to school credit was going to pay seventy-six point seven percent of the bill. Now they're going to pay twenty-four point seven percent of the bill. The state of Minnesota is going to kick in fifty-two percent of the bill. And my spouse always looks twice at half off sales. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty good deal, so fifty-two percent. And then obviously, personal, residential, commercial, there are no credits to help those, but low interest rates help those parties in particular. So, that's trying to summarize the value to this, to your community of that ag to school credit, so.
On that ag to school credit, is there a minimum that they would contribute?
No, no, there are no...
So, the forty, I think it was currently?
It was forty percent.
Forty, forty-five?
Forty, forty.
Forty, okay. And that was written into law? Was there any caveats written to that one?
Nope, nope.
So, that, chances are it could never drop below the forty percent?
Yeah, I mean, well, I doubt it'll ever drop below this fifty percent now, but...
Hopefully not.
Correct, yep.
But if they end up...
So, people always ask that. So, while the legislature can change this at any time, yes, they can. I was at meetings in southeast Minnesota when this first came into play, and Tony Cornish and Julie Rosen, both Republican members, and both, I believe, might have been sponsors from the Republican side. It was Senator Julie Rosen's tax committee that actually passed the first time. They both spoke to that, those communities there and said, it's political suicide for us as politicians to repeal this.
Right.
Because now it's in place. People have passed elections thinking it's in place, and the reality is, I think it passed at like a ninety-seven percent rate in both the House and the Senate, so there was very little opposition. And the same thing, same thing happened this spring when they ratcheted that up to seventy percent. So, it has strong support. Very strong.
Again, it's, I don't know of anybody who voted against it.
Yeah.
It is a very bipartisan, so, so that to get messed with, it seems really...
Yeah.
But they did put some things about the state budget in.
Right, you know, again...
So, there's some language things that...
Right.
But that's at that seventy percent level?
Right, yes. Before it can go to that, there's some qualifiers, and I don't recall them right now what it has to be, but...
But I think it will go to sixty percent.
Sixty percent, and then after that, it's got to hit those budget details for the state of Minnesota, so, a pretty good deal. The other thing people always ask, are we locked in now as interest rates change? No, when you sign these papers, you lock in at these interest rates until we potentially try to refinance. And that refinance date, I believe, for these bonds is twenty twenty-nine.
You'll find this a better deal, Kelly?
Well, yep. Well, and that will lead me into, how can you get a better deal than we got today? Well, we're going to talk about that premium, that weird thing called premium that you received, and why your power amount is less than the voters approve. Interest rates are at this low period in time, and we call that a premium environment, so investors don't really, don't get excited about investing in something at one point six, seven percent. They want a higher rate. So, I always liken it to when I went in for a home mortgage, and I thought the rate was high, I asked the banker, can I buy some points? I give you some extra money upfront, will you lower that rate by a quarter percent or three, three eighths of a percent? And you can do that. This works in the opposite way. The rates are low from your point as far as selling these bonds. The investor is asking, if we give you more than, bond sell in five thousand dollar increments, so if we give you more than five thousand for this bond, will you raise the interest rate so we get a higher yield on it? So, that's what's happening here. So, in June, we had predicted around two point seven premium, and then we ended, excuse me, in June, we predicted two point one seven million in premium, and today, we ended up almost three million in premium. So, again, the rates continue to drop, the premium went up. So, what it, so, when you look at the annual debt service payments, you're going to see a five percent there. That's the interest rate that investors get. You paid extra to get five percent. When you do all the math, it comes down to the twenty-year average of that interest rate is two point five percent as we started performing. So, so, yes, when we go to re, and look at refund that, there are some of these bonds that are five percent, three and four percent. I guess you have a lot of threes at the end of yours, so it might be a little tougher to refinance yours. Some districts end up with five percent coupons at the end, and there would be a refunding opportunity. So, that's something we keep an eye on all the time. There's a call date out there, and we, we keep looking at that. As soon as that call date is getting close, if the interest environment would benefit the district to go ahead and refund that, so. So, that's why you have less than twenty-seven point seven million in your power amount. It's now to twenty-four million, twenty-five million four hundred and fifteen thousand. But your construction fund actually went up through this process because of that premium. At the RTR meeting, because they have very similar numbers to use, I was asked, well, how come we can't keep all of that premium? And you can't because it's against the law. There's a limit of two percent that you can keep over what was approved by your public. So, twenty-seven point seven million, two percent of that is like five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, something like that. That was the limit you could keep, and that gives you that twenty-eight million one seventy-five number that's going to your construction fund. Just for a note, I was trying, was trying to jot down as we're getting ready for the meetings. I left before all of this was maybe done. When we started the process, the construction project looked to be getting about twenty-six million four hundred thousand dollars. And then in June, we, because of the premium, and we were literally already over the cap of what you could keep, it was twenty-eight hundred, twenty-eight million one seventy-one, and you ended up getting an extra four thousand dollars to go, you know, one point seven million more than what we thought. And again, tax, you're going back to that tax impact to your residents, it's thirty-five percent lower than what we expected. So, I've rambled on, so, do I have any questions?
Again, I just would like to emphasize that, you know, the bond in the election was for twenty-seven point seven million, and these numbers don't reflect that. They're based on that, but we're actually getting twenty-eight point one million for the project, and the taxpayers are only going to be required to pay twenty-five point four million, so it's really two point three million dollars less in tax obligation.
Right, yep.
And when you go through and look at these runs, of course, it's nice to see that, I think we use the average home in Pipestone at a hundred and fifty thousand. Was that thirty-six dollars a year, and it's going to be a twenty-three dollar a year, so that's nice. And for the farmers, that's... And for the farmers, that fifty-six cents an acre is ending up being twenty-nine cents an acre, so. The timing, I guess, I wanted to say that we were just that good. But we were just that lucky. Is that better to say, Kelly?
It was always planned.
Could you beat it next week? Maybe.
Okay.
Boy, these are really, I wouldn't get greedy.
No, okay.
Really good numbers for you. And you maximize the amount you can get for your project. So you really couldn't increase that at all, even if the rates improved from here on. I was going to, one other number, just because I like numbers. So total interest over the life, in the ballot, we said twelve million four hundred and forty-six thousand. And today, it's eleven million two seventy-two. So, you know, one million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in the interest over life of the bond. That's, that's. So I have, if there is a resolution in front of you, given Deb all the signature pages, the pages need a chair and clerk. And one, either the chair, clerk, or superintendent can sign. Just make sure all the copies are signed. I think there are two of that, six of one of them. And there's an envelope to return those. And then again, the proceeds will be available to the district August twenty-second.
I'll just read, this resolution relates to twenty-five million four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar general obligation school building bonds, series two thousand nineteen A. It authorizes the issuance, awarding of the sale, prescribing the form in details, and providing the payment thereof as contained in this fourteen-page document. So that's what our resolution is regarding. And just Baker Tilly has recommended that Piper Jaffray and company is the low bidder for these bonds.
Okay. Do I have a motion to award the sale resolution?
Some.
Katie, do I have a second?
Second.
Randy? Okay, unless we need a roll call on Deb?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Brad? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Marcy is yes, I'm a yes.
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 Lance?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
All are yeses. Motion passes. Anything else on that, then? We need to do.
Nope.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your late work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The funds will be coming in August at that point. We're prepared, Jackie's prepared to manage it wisely.
Pressure's on.
No, no.
I have a lot of pressure.
I don't know if I can.
Okay, we'll move on to eight point two, approved payment of regular monthly bills. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Lance?
Second.
Second. Amy? Are there any questions? Any questions? Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor to approve payment of regular monthly bills signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Hearing none, motion passes. Approved treasurers report for June two thousand nineteen. Do I have a motion?
Some.
Katie, I'll second. Are there any questions for Jackie? Does Jackie have anything to say on this?
No.
Okay, any questions for Jackie? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve treasurer's report for June two thousand nineteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. And one motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to all the policies. We will do them in one motion. These are year-to-year.
Yeah, maybe I'll just go through them real quickly. We have to renew these policies every year as required by law. I will just go through them very quickly. Policy four-ten is the family medical leave policy. This is the Family Medical Leave Act of nineteen ninety-three. We need to be in compliance with that. There are no changes to the policy. Four thirteen is harassment and violence. This is basically that we will have a learning and working environment free of harassment and violence. No changes to that policy. Four fourteen is mandated reporting of a child. There are no changes to that. All school, all teachers and school personnel are mandated reporters for any of that type of thing. Also, four fifteen is mandated reporting for the maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Very similar to policy four fourteen. And again, no changes. Five oh six is our student discipline policy. There are no changes to that. This is what our expectations are of student conduct. Five fourteen is our bullying prohibition policy. This is how the district plans to prevent and deal with bullying. No changes to that policy. Five twenty-two is the student sex non-discrimination policy. This is a Title IX requirement. We did have to change the board chair's name from Wendy Schoolmeister, too. And we just are going to leave it at school board chair rather than have the name in there. That's the only change in that policy. Five twenty-four is our internet acceptable use and safety policy. Last updated in two thousand fourteen. The model policy was used, but there were some things that Mr. Strasser put in. And so we updated those with kind of what we've been doing there. There's a policy five fifty-one, which is not a part of the annual review, but that is our academic activity, academic eligibility and probation. We just made the changes that were reflected in the last activities handbook. Policy six sixteen is the school district system accountability. Under reporting, we had to add that there would be a school performance report that includes information and proficiency rates as required by the recent reauthorized Elementary and Secondary Schools Act, which is from federal law. And it just basically says we're going to implement the Minnesota academic standards. And then eight oh six, our crisis management policy. There are no changes. We finalized this two years ago, and we will be doing it in the next two years when the new building comes into play. So that's a review of those policies.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Some.
Marcy, second?
Second.
Katie? Any further discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor approving all the policies, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes. Eight point one five, approved lease with Hartland Colony.
The Hartland Colony School is a site of our school district. We must have a lease with them for the property, for the classrooms that we use out there. Been doing this, need to renew it every year, so I recommend there we approve it. Any questions?
Further discussion? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the lease with Hartland Colony?
Some.
Randy, second?
Second.
Brad? All those in favor approving the lease with Hartland Colony signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Hearing none, motion passes. Eight point one six, resolution approving school district's long-term facilities.
Each year, we're required to have a ten-year plan for the maintenance of our facilities. The state has a sheet that they put together that shows what our revenues are projected to be, and then we put in what we're expecting to do. I've got a spreadsheet. You'll see the report here from Jackie. We did try to coordinate some things like the air handlers and those systems, concrete, parking lots, some of that stuff with LTFM. So I think that as we go through the construction project, if there is things, they will be reflected there. But we're trying to maximize our dollars there. And so, again, we do this every year. We made adjustments. We've gone through it, and recommend we approve this also.
Okay.
And we can adjust it, so if there's something in here, next year, we can move things around, which we do. Things go up, too, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the school district's long-term facility maintenance plan?
Some moved.
Brad? I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of approving the district's long-term facility maintenance plan signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes.